Hey Rick, you're on.
Okay, my name is Rick Leaf. I'm Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. This open joint meeting of the Northborough Select Board and the Master Plan Implementation Committee is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 22, excuse me, pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March 29, 2023. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. All members of the Select Board and the Master Plan Implementation Committee are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Select Board and the Master Plan Implementation Committee to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda, unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to review the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access did not ensure public participation, unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. And with that, I'll call attendance for the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and then Mitch will do the same for the Select Board. Okay, starting with our Town Planning Director, Laurie Connors.
Here.
Julianne Hirsch.
Here.
Well, I guess we'll be called twice tonight. You're very lucky, Julianne. Amy Paretsky.
Here.
Millie Milton.
Here.
Ashley Davies. I think Ashley said she would not be able to make it. Tracy Camerano.
Here.
Fran Baxter.
Here.
Jean Kennedy.
Here.
Jean Cahill said she would not be able to make it. Rick Leaf is here. John Campbell.
Here.
Jen Tolman. I haven't seen Jen yet. Okay, Mitch.
Thank you very much, Rick. My name is Mitch Cohen, and I chair the Northborough Select Board, and I will call the Select Board half of this meeting to order, and make sure that members can hear and be heard in order on my screen. I see Laura Zeiten.
Here.
Lisa Mucelli.
Here.
Kristen Wickstod.
Here.
Julianne Hirsch.
Here.
Also with us tonight is our new Town Administrator, Tim McInerney. Say hi, everybody. Tim, who we haven't met yet.
Hello, here.
Excellent. And I think now I will turn it back to you, Rick, for starting things off.
Okay, thanks, Mitch. First of all, I just want to mention a few other people who are on the meeting tonight. We have Jonathan Law, who's from Weston and Sampson, the company who conducted the study, produced the report. He's the project manager. And we have Russ Archimbo, Russ is Principal with RKG Associates. They were brought on board by Weston Sampson to provide the market analysis portion of the report, as well as to provide expertise in downtown revitalization activities. So Jonathan will be presenting the actual report on the study, and Russ will be assisting with that. Basically, what's going to happen tonight is, I'm going to give a brief overview and history of how we've got to be where we are tonight. Just take a few minutes to do that. Jonathan will come on next, and he will do an overview of the highlights of the report, maybe concentrating on the revitalization strategies and scenarios and some implementation strategy. When that's complete, we'll have a session for questions and answers and comments, which Mitch will coordinate. When that is complete, our Town Planning Director, Laurie Connors, has a proposal for a go-in activity here, which is a streetscape improvement plan that she's going to present tonight for consideration, something we feel we could do to get started in 2024 as a first step towards revitalization. And when that's complete, there'll be another opportunity for questions and comments, and then we'll wrap up the presentation. So that's kind of how things are going to flow tonight. The impetus to do all of this came from our most current townwide master plan, which was completed in 2020. When that plan was developed, there were many public information and input sessions. And what became apparent was, far and away, the topic that gained the most interest and the topic that town residents want to see something happen on was the improvement of our downtown. So there's much that's included in our town master plan around ideas and suggestions for the improvement and the revitalization of our downtown. When the master plan was completed, the Select Board established the Master Plan Implementation Committee, which we refer to as the MPIC for the rest of the evening. And the purpose of the MCIT was to review the plan and to ensure that the town, over time, would take actions to implement the recommendations in the plan. Once the MPIC reviewed the plan, it was obvious that the number one thing we had to get moving on was this desire of the residents of the town to work on improving the downtown area. To that end, working with the town staff, we engaged Weston and Sampson to come in and lead the effort to define a plan for possible revitalization of the downtown. And over the past year, the committee, working with the consultants and through a number of public meetings, have developed a plan which you're going to see tonight. And I want to thank Jonathan and Russ for all the work they put into this. I also want to thank the MPIC for the time it spent working with the consultants to pull this plan together. And I certainly want to thank all of the town residents who attended the many open sessions that we held. All of the input was really valuable to defining the plan that we're going to discuss tonight. I think it's important to realize that there's a lot in this plan. It offers a lot of significant recommendations for how to do redevelopment. It'll be a multi-year effort to do the things that are in the plan. But it's also important to realize that the plan is a guide, that it's not our expectation that everything in the plan is going to get done exactly as it's set in the plan. The timeframes in the plan probably aren't going to be followed exactly as in their plan. There could be opportunities that come up that we don't expect that'll cause us to change course of action, or there could be obstacles we don't expect that would come up. It's also important to realize that much of the property in downtown is privately owned. And where this is going to go in the future is going to have a lot to do with developing working relationships with property owners and business owners, and kind of working together as to what we can do and how we can do it. So I think we have to understand that what's going to be presented tonight is not gospel. There are great ideas, and there's a lot to be considered here, but there's going to be a lot that we as a town are going to need to do to take this and move it forward. Having said that, there's a number of things that can happen in the short term. Certainly, things around streetscape improvement and the look and feel of kind of what the streets in the town looks like. There could be some things that could be done there. And as I said, Laurie's going to presenting a first stab at that tonight. There's also a lot of planning we can do in the short term. We need to take a look at our zoning and see how that affects what can be done in the downtown. The plan recommends a certain amount of residential development in the downtown area. It's been shown that other successful downtowns have residential typically on floors and buildings above the ground floor, where you might find restaurants or shops. And we need to understand what type and density of housing in the downtown we might want to do, both in the master plan development and in the development of this particular downtown revitalization plan. A lot of people talked about wanting a classic New England feel in the downtown. But what that means exactly from an implementation standpoint needs to be decided. Most likely, our design standards are going to need to be modified so that we give a clear picture to the development community as to what it is we feel is acceptable and we're going to see built. So some work needs to be done around that. There's going to be a lot of staff time needed to do this, and the plan recommends adding an economic development position onto the town staff that in the short term would become the downtown revitalization manager. In the longer term, would look at economic development across the entire town. And that person would establish a downtown management organization to manage these activities. So thought is going to have to be put into exactly how and when that happens. And the plan also mentions that there are two town-owned properties that are critical to this. One is the Old Town Hall on 4 West Main Street, and the other is the existing fire station on Pierce Street. Both of those buildings the town owns, and so we have the ability to decide what's going to happen there and how it's going to happen. There's a committee right now looking at what makes sense for the long-term placement of the town offices. And work of that committee is going to be carefully coordinated with downtown revitalization. And the plan outlines some excellent opportunities for what could be done with the fire station, including opening up the back all the way down to Cold Harbour Brook as kind of a park area. There's a lot of interesting things in there about the fire station. Those are things under our control that we can make some decisions on in the short term. So there's a lot that can happen once we get done with this. I think the greatest benefit from doing this plan is it basically generates ideas that we can look at, and it provides a starting point to begin the process of determining what we want the downtown to look like and how and when we want to take the steps to make it happen. As I said before, the MPIC was formed to ensure that the desires of residents expressed in the master plan are addressed. The single most requested item in the master plan is improving the downtown. And using this plan as a guide, I think we now need to start the process. So having said all of that, I'll get off my soapbox, and I'll turn it over to Jonathan to start to do the presentation.
Thanks, Rick. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, and I'll ask those who are not part of the presentation team to turn off their cameras so people can focus their eyes on you and the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks, Rick, for that introduction. I think that was a great quick synopsis of how we got to this point. I just want to say that it's been a pleasure to work with the town and the MPIC and especially the residents of Northborough to help develop the master plan report and the design scenarios that you're going to see today and that you will see in the report. It's been a very collaborative effort, and as I said, it's been a great partnership to this point. So quick meeting agenda you just heard from Rick. First of all, we're going to talk about the project meetings and the feedback that we received at those meetings, which ultimately led to how the three design scenarios were selected and how those three design scenarios ultimately looked. And as Rick mentioned, and I'll just, you know, touch on that as well, is what you see before you today is a starting point. It's not anything set in stone. It's, in some cases, it could be conversation starters with developers, you know, people who want to bring new development into town. So by no means is it, you know, what you see here set in stone, and there's lots of room for improvements, for revisions. So just bear that in mind. We'll talk about implementation strategies, and then, as Rick also mentioned, Laurie will talk briefly about a Blake Street design scenario, which is different to what you'll see today. So the public stakeholder engagement, it first started with a booth at Apple Fest. Couple of Weston and Sampson employees attended Apple Fest. They gave out information on the survey questions and just took some general feedback about people's wants and needs for downtown. It's almost a year since the first public meeting. I can't quite believe that. And we were very surprised on that first day. It was a relatively cold day in the midst of winter, and I think nearly 80 people showed up. So that showed us as a design team, the interest straight off the bat for this project. You know, typically, you can come to some meetings and there's five people show up. So the fact that almost 80 people showed up was a great thing for us to see. And it was a very, it was a great meeting. We got lots of great feedback. We actually developed a pretty simple way of getting people to "design", and I'll use that in quotation marks, without having to do a design, and I'll explain that later on. The second public meeting, we presented the design scenarios in a cartoonish-type way, and that was again based on feedback that we received, not only at the public meeting, but also at the MPIC meetings we'd attended between those two dates. And then the final public meeting in June, we developed the graphics to be more photorealistic and incorporate some of the final wants and needs that, again, we heard from the public meeting number two, and then further meetings with the MPIC. In between all that, Russ also hosted a business focus group meeting in February. Russ, you want to quickly touch on that?
Yes, we invited business owners, property owners, to attend that meeting to figure in that they had a certain perspective of owning businesses and operating businesses downtown. We really wanted to hear what that experience is like, what their needs were, and what they'd like to see. And not surprisingly, they echoed a lot of the same themes that the general public mentioned to us.
Thanks, Russ. As I mentioned, at Apple Fest, we introduced the idea of an online survey for downtown master plan ideas to be gathered. And that was opened from September to December. There's a 12-question digital survey, and we got 636 responses. Again, great feedback and great participation by town residents. As I mentioned, we, as a design team, attended nine MPIC meetings that were, again, very collaborative. We listened, we presented, and, you know, ideas were bounced back and forth between the design team and the MPIC committee members. And then finally, we had email blasts to raise project awareness, and then project notifications and articles published in the local newspaper. So it was a very collaborative effort, you know, reached lots of people to be able to, you know, give ideas and thoughts on how downtown should look. I'll just go through a couple of sheets on the survey. So, you know, a big question on the survey was, if you don't like going downtown, please tell us why. And I think you'll notice the two major factors here is unattractive, and there's little to do downtown that interests me. I think those two responses alone really tell a significant story about how people feel downtown looks to them today. So a couple of questions that we'll focus on, you know, why do people feel as though revitalization is needed, and what are the top priorities? You'll see I've highlighted or underlined in red here the responses that got the most strongly agreed comments to. So eaterys, more restaurants, cafes, bakeries, improvement of streetscapes downtown, storefront and building improvements, fill empty storefronts, facades, and then walkability. Again, that ties back into streetscape improvements. Then we asked the question, what type of development services does downtown need more or less of? So again, when we look at what it needs more of, it's related to retail, restaurants, drinking, entertainment, and farmers' markets. So again, you know, it's a similar message that we're hearing to what we heard in the public meetings as well. So some of the stakeholder feedback that we received. Traffic volumes were disruptive in the morning and evening rush hours. There's heavy traffic. It makes it unsafe for pedestrian movements. There's a lack of parking, or maybe not a lack of parking, but a lack of signage to know where people can park off Main Street. The presence of gas stations on Main Street create potential redevelopment obstacles, vehicle congestion. Lots of people seem skeptical about making policy changes to Route 20 because of mass DOT's resistance. And then the Assabett River is a natural resource that is hidden from view and not accessed as much as it can be. And then the town needs the ability to support and assist people in making investments downtown. So when we look at the stakeholder feedback, the market factors, do you want to talk about this, Russ?
Sure, I'll mention a couple that stand out. You know, I think when you look at the greater Boston area, every community is sort of faced with growing demand for new development and growth. And we see that Northborough, although it's probably long been seen as a bedroom community, is uniquely positioned to capture its fair share of that. However it determines it wants to sort of meet that need. You have good transportation access. You're not too far from Boston, so people can get in if that's where they work. So the market is surprisingly strong in some areas. But you have a lot of regional competition too, so you have to sort of choose wisely what those opportunities are for you. We think we've identified some of those for you in the plan, and we'll share those with you shortly. But you also own some key properties that could be an enticement to others who want to revitalize downtown. So you have the ability to sort of shape the direction and, you know, opportunities for people to help you with revitalization. So I think that was the main takeaways there.
So as I mentioned, at the first public meeting, as a design team, before we, you know, partake in the first meeting, we thought about how can we best get people's feedback and input on design features that they would like to see downtown without scaring them into having to draw on a piece of paper or give ideas verbally. So we came up with this solution of creating stickers that had a breadth of many different elements, you know, ranging from car charging, complete streets, bike lanes, water features, and outdoor dining housing. And we ran this by the MPIC and got some feedback about the criteria that we should show. So, you know, the approach was that when people arrived, we had the large maps of the elements printed out, and then we asked people to take the stickers and put them on the piece of paper that they felt that those scenario areas needed these elements the most. So this is an image from the first public meeting. So you can see people are looking over the scenario areas and putting in the stickers that they feel that these specific areas would benefit from in terms of a design attribute. And then you can see in the image on the left here, we also add some precedent image boards of certain elements within downtown, and we asked people to place stickers on those images that they felt resonated with them the most. So again, this was a great way to obtain feedback from a lot of people without putting pressure on them to have to write things down or draw things or even articulate things in a certain way. And we felt that this was a really successful exercise. In fact, it was so successful, I've used it on a few other projects since this time. So we took all that information, and we took it back to the office and analyzed it along with the online survey. And from that came the four scenarios, which later turned into three, to develop what people mainly wanted to see in these four scenarios. So you can see, we tied back in the stickers into what elements they wanted to see in these certain zones. From that, we took that information and then created a bubble master plan, a bubble diagram master plan. So this is our first attempt at trying to take the information we received and then develop it into some type of design in a simplistic form. So you can see, we have the scenario Area 3 over here, which is by South Street and West Main and Gale. Scenario number one, which is the fire station here, CVS, Town Hall, and Blake Street. Excuse me. And then scenario Area 2 is the Harvey property. One of the other scenario or design areas was Route 20. After doing some transportation calculations and analysis of those transportation calculations and talking to mass DOT, it was discovered that any changes to the road diet on West Main Street would not be really possible. Otherwise, it would make the traffic backups even worse. So mass DOT owned jurisdiction of that roadway. So it was basically told to the design team that making any changes to line widths or adding bike lanes wasn't really possible. So when we look at the scenario number one, which we call the Entertainment Hub, which is, so the Old Town Hall here, West Main Street, Church Street, Pierce Street, the fire station. Again, this design was developed in conjunction with what we heard at all three public meetings, with our meetings with the MPIC. And of course, not everybody agrees to this plan, but it did bring together the consensus of most people's ideas. So as Rick mentioned, we've got connections to Cold Harbour Brook, the old fire station. And this design has turned into cafes and coffee shops and restaurants in the rear with public open space, and like I said, connections to Cold Harbour Brook. You'll see that this scenario is heavily, very heavily pedestrianized. And what people wanted to see here was bars and outdoor dining and restaurants, more EV parking, multifamily housing along Main Street and near the fire station, connections to Cold Harbour Brook Trail connections, burying utilities, improving the character and sidewalk aesthetics, and improving the church Main Street intersection, pedestrian-only streets, areas for public gathering, and places for public art. So we took this master plan, and you're probably wondering, well, why are the buildings just blocks? And then there's no architecture. We felt as though, the design team, this was already a lot of information for people to digest, and by adding detail to buildings would have maybe been a little bit too much. So we just showed these as boxes, simple boxes, and wanted people to focus on the spaces between those boxes that are created. So if we look at some of the renderings that we produced, as I mentioned, public art was a big component of this or a big request of this. That if you're looking at this image, the railway station is to the right. This is Blake Street here, which would become a one-way pedestrian vehicular bike shared street with the option for food trucks and outside dining. This is again a space between the CVS and Blake Street is to the left. So again, creating these public open spaces. We heard a lot of comment about sustainability and addressing climate resiliency and climate change. So you can see these streets are heavily tree-lined, so again, reducing the effects of urban heat island on pedestrians. Because if we make spaces more comfortable for pedestrians to be in, they will use those spaces more. And then the top-bottom two images show the back of the fire station. So as I mentioned, restaurant in the back with shaded patio spaces and connections down to the Cold Harbour Brook. And again, that's just another close-up image of that outdoor dining terrace. And these open spaces are designed with flexibility in mind. So this space could be used for, you know, outdoor concert in the summer series or something like that. So they're not just a one task fits all. You know, we've developed them with flexibility in mind. So then when we look at scenario two, which is slightly different from numbered from the first bubble diagram we made, and again, this was based on feedback received from the MPIC. This is the Harvey site. So obviously, the Harvey site has probably has the most potential because it's one owner. It's a couple of buildings there today, and there's a lot of space. So when we presented this, we called it the downtown extension because it's not that far in a walking distance from what's considered downtown today. It has the Assabett River that runs adjacent to it. So again, this great amenity is underutilized in this current usage for the Harvey site. So we've created a two-way roadway through this area with some generator buildings on Main Street and then one up on a couple on Hudson. These again would be mixed use with retail or restaurants on the ground floor and then housing above. So what we heard from people that they wanted to see in this area were riverfront trails, mixed-use housing, flexible gathering, pocket parks. Make the Assabett River an amenity by adding a riverwalk and restaurants along the water. Seeing it again tying back into seeing it views of the Assabett and improve connection to the downtown core. So when we look at some of the renderings, the top two are of the riverfront walkway that would be created. And again, it would be a wonderful amenity to get people outside. You know, studies again have shown that since the pandemic, people want to be outside more. And, you know, the town currently has this great asset in the Assabett that's currently underutilized. So providing this riverfront trail and public open space along that trail system would be, you know, a huge asset to not only keeping people in Northborough, but encouraging other people to come down here. So just an aerial view of, this is West Main. So just an aerial view of this is West Main Main Street here. And then there's there's a road connection coming through and the the new trail systems again that connect to the existing sidewalk. And then just an image here of looking now, we can get pedestrians from one side to the other through safe crossings and the street is lined with parallel parking on both sides. So scenario three is what we termed Assabet Mill. And this is the space between Main Street, South Street and Gale Street. The town common you can see is to the top right here and Assabet Park to the left. And again, what we heard from the public input was that people wanted to see in another extension of downtown or just increasing downtown across West Main Street. So bars, again, the same message, outdoor dining, restaurants, municipal parking lots, which you can see have been incorporated here. Areas for food truck dining, which are on this internal loop road and and flexible open spaces that are adjacent to that. New sidewalk connections with granite curbing. And we've incorporated parallel parking along South Street and Main Street, which doesn't exist today. So you're making it feel more of a downtown urban environment. Also, we heard including more housing, repurposing some of the empty buildings, public gathering spaces and public art. But again, you can see here pedestrian connections throughout all these spaces are key to the success of these areas. So this top left image is looking as you would enter if you cross across Main Street into this section, Assabet Mill signage. Again, some public art to help draw you into the spaces and thinking about not only providing shade from trees, but also from shade shelters and structures. Thinking about how people can gather in in communities and in in larger and smaller numbers. So again, sort of thinking about centrally located spaces that are flexible for people to take lunch or to take a walk out at any time of the day. And again, thinking about shade and how people move through these spaces. Creating pedestrian friendly streets. So thinking about how people cross those spaces, how cars navigate through bikes, street line treats, again, thinking about sustainability, introducing rain gardens and trees to help reduce the effects of stormwater on the existing subsurface infrastructure. And then, as I mentioned, you know, places for food trucks and and gathering in smaller and larger numbers. Russ, do I pass this back over to you?
Yes. One thing we wanted to do in concluding our presentation is give you a sense of of how we have approached the the strategies for the plan. These are the actions that the town could take to improve and revitalize downtown. When you when you download your copy of the study, you'll, if you go to the back, you'll see multiple pages of what's called the implementation matrix, which has short term, medium term and long term strategies. We're just going to share with you the these short term strategies, things that could be started within the first three years. In many cases, you'll see, yes, you can start them, but some of them are more complex than others and you couldn't finish them in three years. But you don't wait three years out before you pick up a, you know, a pencil and a notepad and start thinking through what you need to do. So we included all those. So this allows you to sort of pick and choose. The master plan implementation committee said, give us some low hanging fruit that we can start this year. And we will start to tackle the more complex things as time goes by, but we need to be able to sort of bite this off in discreet bites where we can sort of build some momentum. So the first short term objective was improve the aesthetics of downtown Northborough through public and private actions. Not going to read all the actions. I'll let you do that. But really, the focus is is on aesthetics and improving the look and appeal. Then it became apparent that if we're going to be successful at that, we need to be able to carve out some staff time to dedicate to downtown revitalization. So hire an experienced downtown manager. In this case, it may start and be a dual role as an economic development person for the town. But the purpose is that the existing staff does not have the time required to to be successful at implementing this. And we need to bring in that expertise. Review the town zoning regulations. This is something that Rick mentioned earlier. There's a lot of things that as you go through and start to implement, you may find that they come in conflict with the existing zoning. Number one, the existing zoning is for a small town, it's suburban and and character. And you may be dealing with some more urban related issues when you talk about mixed uses with residential and commercial appearing on the same site. That's that's not typical in a suburban setting. So it's going to cause you to have to look at those issues a little bit closer. Next. Pursue adaptive reuse of former town hall building at Four West Main Street, become a new anchor for downtown. We don't know right now what all the potential uses could be for that building. But the fact that the town owns it and controls its future outcome is particularly important. You you could enter into a partnership with a real estate developer to do something unique there. It's also been discussed as the as a location of town hall if it were to move from the existing building. So lots of things to think through there. Develop and implement a multi-year, multi-phase effort to improve public infrastructure downtown. And when we talk about infrastructure, meaning streets, sidewalks, parking lots. People felt strongly about undergrounding utilities. That's something that needs to be looked at. It can be very expensive, but aesthetically, it would be very pleasing. But, you know, how do you incentivize people to make improvements to the space in front of their businesses or just make the the buildings more appealing? Those are all part and parcel of of this strategy. Next. Pursue adaptive reuse of the former Northborough Fire Station into a restaurant, a craft brewery or entertainment venue. All that's yet to be determined. What we do know is that the new fire station is under design. And it'll take probably a couple of years to make that transition occur. But in the meantime, we should be planning for that to occur. And sorting out what that becomes will be part of what happens in this first three years. Create downtown management organization plan, organize and coordinate downtown revitalization activities and create key partnerships. No one does this alone. No towns do it alone. They do it in partnership with businesses. They do it in partnership with developers who want to actually make the implementation occur. That'll take time to build that up. But I think you need to sort of be able to represent the interests of downtown through this downtown management organization. So that's going to involve par property owners and business owners and people who are just advocates for downtown revitalization. So that is in a nutshell, what we believe should be the initial thrust of the of this study and the implementation. And it's going to be really up to the town to sort through what they think the best opportunities are and that that will be what they're involved in 2024. Rick?
So that concludes our presentation. Well, thank you, everybody. We'll open it to questions.
Yeah, thank you guys very much for the presentation. And Mitch, I'll turn it over to you now to sort of coordinate questions from the select board and others that want to participate.
Great. So given the number of people we have within the meeting as well as the public, I'll ask people to just, if you have questions to raise your electronic hand. I'm happy to take questions. I'm sure presenters would be happy to take questions, both from committee members as well as members of the public. And we'll go, we'll go back and forth and try to get everybody's questions in. I am hoping people have questions. I don't see any hands up just yet. Laura, I see, I'm seeing your your actual hand up. I was asking for electronic hands. And I just happened to glance over and saw your real one. So Laura, you're our first customer.
I'll break the ice here. Thank you so much for the presentation. I appreciate it. And I I love the ideas that you proposed. I was noticing that at one point you mentioned the parallel parking on South Street and Main Street in that that area. Would that involve like changing lanes? And if I missed that, I'm sorry. But I know parking is definitely a topic that comes up often. So if you can just clarify that, that would be helpful.
No, that wouldn't involve changing lanes. It would basically, if that land became available, we could take the edge of the existing Main Street and just then offset that eight feet to create the parallel parking spaces. So the the road itself would not change. You just basically go into into the site itself to create those parallel spaces. Same on South Street as well.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying that.
I will clarify that I'll ask people to raise their electronic hands for questions rather than their real ones so that I can see them. Ah, I see one from the audience, a couple from the audience, just in order that they've been raised. Eric Martin, Eric, I'll bring in, if you could unmute yourself, identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Thank you, Mitch. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric Martin, 32 Weston Terrace. I had a quick question just about traffic. I'm sorry about that. I I understand that it's Route 20, so those lights are under Mass DOT control. And my son often refers to that as an airlock, right? With those lights just kind of let you, it's it just one after another, you just hit those lights. Do we have, and while I understand we can't do anything about it, do we have open lines of communication? And can you just go over what if any ways we have to talk to Mass DOT about possibly, you know, helping that out?
You mean in terms of how the signals work?
Yes, yes, specifically the timing of the signals to make traffic flow a little more efficiently as opposed to right, three seconds red light. And I mean, you know, you just you just get a red light and then a red light and then a red light.
Yeah. If if the the sequencing of the lights don't work for the town, the town can certainly open discussions with Mass DOT about changing how those crossings are timed. That's a pretty easy fix as far as I'm not a transportation engineer and our transportation is not on the call. But my understanding is that's a pretty easy change to to figure out how to time the the crossings or how the lights change. I I think that's a fairly easy fix. So that is possible, yes.
Okay, the reason why I ask is because previously, when it's been asked, it's the answer is, well, that's Mass DOT. And then it's just kind of left, it's just kind of left there. It's Mass DOT and we can't do anything about it. But it it sounds like there there is a process, though. There's a process that we can.
Yeah, I think that, so as I said, we we did some traffic analysis and that include traffic counts. So the town has that information now. So that could be used to go to open discussions with Mass DOT about how these these lights are phased. So, you know, that you do have that information to be able to say, hey, we think that the backup times are, you know, the the backup lengths are, you know, X number of feet. How can we think about changing that? So you do have that information as part of this report.
Oh, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric. Let's see, Lisa Maselli.
Thank you. I would, and adding to Eric's questions, I would like to see us to try, see if we as a board could try to get a relationship going with the DOT. Actually have talks with the DOT and maybe we can see what it is that is available. And you know, answer some of those questions for both moving forward and even for now, because I think that's a huge complaint that we have is that we've never been able to get the the lighting done correctly. So I might recommend we do that. Thank you.
I know that our DPW director has a line of communication with the DOT. And there was a a question that came up about a year ago on the select board. I don't remember exactly what it was. And he provided some information back that he he got from from there. But as Jonathan was saying, if we want them to make changes to the timing, they they thought the timing was pretty good at that point. But now that we have some data, we may be able to show it otherwise. I'm going to jump back to Lisa, you're all set?
Thank you.
Okay, and jump back to an audience question, John Rappa. John, if you could just unmute yourself, identify yourself and ask a question.
Western Terrace. To Laura Zaitin's point about South Street and Main Street and parallel parking, that would involve a taking, would it not?
So can you, you've kind of broken up. Can you repeat?
That would involve a taking. So if you want to expand that onto my property, you're going to have to take a piece of my land. Is that not correct?
Under this, yeah, again, under this current design, that would be required, yes. But again, these are these are designs to open discussions like this. It's not as I said, anything set in stone.
Yep, thanks.
And that was just as a follow on.
Oh, okay. So go ahead, Russ. I was I was gonna ask a question, but you go ahead.
I think the way that the way the plan was sort of laid out is that we sort of set the the vision for a given block. And at some point, people need to sit down and talk about the potential for that to happen. I don't think there was ever any discussion about taking people's property. So I would discourage that sort of idea. It's not how these things are done anymore. But I think it's sort of the ideas on the table to start the conversation.
Yeah, if I could just follow up on that also. Certainly during discussions between the committee and the consultants, the thrust was to develop working relationships with the property owners in the town to understand what their desires and goals were. And when opportunities presented themselves where someone might be interested in selling their property or redeveloping it, to work through the plan to see how some of these ideas could be implemented. But there was never discussion that the town would go in and start to take land. It was always going to be a collaborative effort between the town and the owners. And one of the things that led us to the recommendation to develop, to bring in an economic development coordinator was to sort of get on top of that and start to manage those relationships on behalf of the town. So it's it's, I'll just confirm what Russ said. It's it's not the intent of this plan to cause land takings to happen.
Yeah, that was what I was going to add is we would need to clearly have control of the land to put a to to make it parking. But oftentimes, I know with these projects, they're done collaboratively where you might trade a piece of property or get permission to place that on there, get an easement for parking in exchange for something else. I hope we don't consider, you know, when I hear taking, I usually think about eminent domain takings. And I don't think there's much appetite for that. But it's a good question, John. Thank you. Kristen, I see your hand up. Friend, I'm sorry, friend, did you have your hand up before? You're all set?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Kristen, next.
Hi, thanks. So I just wanted to add more of a comment. I liked that there's the fourth thought to or the foresight to have electric car charging opportunities in the downtown. I can tell you as a person who's had an electric car for several years now. And for a while, I was like one of the seven people in the state, it felt like. And now there are more and more and more, which is great. But I have spent so much time in Foxborough because they have electric car charging right in the center of their town at their Bank of America. I have had spent time at various Denny's and Walmarts and places that were just a little bit off my path. Because there just aren't enough charging stations and it it's a draw, basically. It's a draw for people to spend time in the town at these little businesses. It's so nice to be able to get an errand done at CVS or also to have a cup of coffee at one of our really great little coffee shops in town. And also, we have lots of good pizza. So, you know, it's just, it's an opportunity when you're driving to just stop and enjoy a place a little bit. And if it's already kind of a nice place, electric car charging is a genius idea. So I'm really glad you all incorporated it in in the idea. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen. We have an audience question from John Bourgeois. I'm going to bring you in, John. You could unmute, identify yourself and ask a question, please.
Hi, my name's John Bourgeois, 52 Washington Street. And I guess the question I have is early on in presentation, I think Rick had noted that unless I heard it wrong, that there are some beautification projects that we are going to move on potentially next year in terms of it sounds as though, you know, sidewalk improvements, adding benches, trees, that type of thing. Is that, did I hear that correctly? Is that, did I hear that correctly?
I think what I said was that in the short term, we should be analyzing that. Lori's gonna present um, a plan which is a little bit more elaborate than that for a Blake Street that would start to implement those kinds of things, although there's going to need to be she'll indicate some engineering and design before that can happen. Lori has put some planters here and there in town already, and there could be some other short-term opportunities um, to do that. So specifically, we don't have a, a specific a tree or box or something that we have in mind to put somewhere tomorrow. But that is all possible and with some design and thought to some larger scale streetscape beautification we can do. And once again, I won't steal Lori's thunder, but she's going to make a presentation about that next.
And, and I guess before Lori jumps in, I guess the other question would be, uh, it was mentioned that the, uh, you know, obviously the fire station is going in the next year or two, and I've been sitting in and all those meetings, sat on, sat in on that meeting last night. Um, great project, great results. Um, is there any thought in terms of enhancing that project as it relates to uh, road beautification, again, plantings, benches along the sidewalk, extending the sidewalk beyond just the fire station, maybe down towards, you know, the condos there on the left, the townhouses and and just take, and taking advantage of that. Again, I'm thinking this is low hanging fruit that we could possibly take advantage of and jumpstart what we're all hoping to accomplish here, short term and long term.
Yeah, these are possibilities for that. As the permitting happens for that, I know that the planning board, you know, talks about sidewalks and developers' responsibility for sidewalks. And so considering, you know, extensions of the sidewalks and what that's going to look like, it, you know, it's been pretty apparent at the fire station meetings that sightlines and visibility on Main Street out of the fire station are important. So there's probably not going to be a lot of landscaping, um, on the streetscape around that driveway and out of the fire station. I did see that they had like a grassy strip sort of in the plan there and some landscaping sort of on the sides, but certainly as that's permitted, what can happen with that sidewalk and how big of a sidewalk, a long of a sidewalk can be done? I think would be a valid question for the planning board to consider.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, John. I see another question from the audience, Peter Seppi. I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly. Peter, if you could unmute and identify yourself and ask a question, please.
Can you guys hear me?
We do.
Hi, uh, Pete Seppi. Uh, it's fine. A lot of people get the last name wrong. It's no big deal. Um, I live over it at one ninety Howard Street in town. And, uh, my question for all of you is, um, now I understand that this is the very early stages of the master plan implementation. Um, however, is there any, in terms of rezoning the downtown core area, especially when in terms of the gas stations, that's my priority. What possibility is there of rezoning those sites and putting mixed-use buildings in there? Cause we have four gas stations at two block radius. It's just, just seems silly to me. No.
Well, Lori, you want to take that one?
Sure. Um, so there, there was a pretty significant zoning rewrite that was done uh, back in, I, I believe it was two thousand nine and, uh, the rewrite, uh, for the downtown business district, uh, put a heavy emphasis on mixed use. Um, so unfortunately, we haven't seen a ton of revitalization thus far. So a lot of the historic uses like the gas stations and the service stations are, are still present. They haven't been revitalized yet. Um, but the zoning, uh, already is in a pretty good state to encourage the type of, uh, mixed uses that you're talking about. And I believe that the, uh, gas stations are actually, uh, have been zoned out uh, as part of that zoning rewrite. So unfortunately, um, when you're talking about zoning and you're talking about land use, uh, you're, you're talking in decades instead of in years. So that's the timeline that I work in. Um, so I'm used to things turning over on a very slow clip. Um, but there are some other zoning changes, uh, that would need to be done in order to realize the vision uh, that is, uh, put forth in this document. Uh, so it doesn't currently allow the density, um, that is envisioned in this document. So um, expect, uh, some zoning changes to come forward in the near future.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Pete. Okay, are there any other questions either from attendees or committee members? If not, um, I will say that I don't remember if it was mentioned earlier, that anyone who wants to see this full report, um, can download it from the town website. You can go to the, um, you go to the town website, go to boards and committees and then master plan implementation committee. And then on the left, the currently the second item down is downtown revitalization report one eight twenty-four. And, uh, that's the report that we've been referring to in here. And, um, it's helpful to, uh, for looking at the maps and some of the high density charts and plans, uh, to, to get in the PDF on your computer, kind of zoom it in. Okay, I think the questions for now have died down. Um, I'm sure more people will have questions. Um, Rick, if people have follow-up questions, what is a good avenue to, to address those?
I'm going to say, putting Lori on the spot, the best place after the meeting would be to direct questions through Lori and she can direct them back to the consultants.
Yes, I'd be happy to, to be a conduit. If I can answer the question, I certainly will, will try to do so. And if it's over my head, I will, uh, happily forward your, your question to the consultant team.
Great.
I guess also after Lori gets done with her presentation, we'll take some more questions and comments. And if someone forgot a question for, uh, for John, Jonathan and Russ, they're still here, we can take questions about the plan after Lori's presentation also.
Great. And for those, uh, at home who, uh, need to reach Lori on that same master plan implementation committee page I was referring to, you'll see Lori Connors' name with a link down there as to a way to, uh, to get in touch with her. Um, so I think this phase of the media, oh, sorry, I see an electronic hand up. Lisa Maselli.
Hi there. I just had a quick follow-up question with Lori. What's the timeline that you have the consultants for? Is there an end date or is this something that is a year from the road, you know? I'm sure everybody would like to know.
Well, they, they are wrapping up, uh, this phase of the project. So, uh, I anticipate um, that they will be done with this particular phase within the next couple of weeks. So the, um, the plan itself is complete. Uh, this presentation was, uh, a requirement of, um, this effort. And then, you know, their job will be done. I'm sure they'd be happy to answer some lingering last minute questions that may arise, uh, as a result of this presentation. But um, if we were to engage them on future initiatives, that would be a separate contract.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Lori, just to confirm, happy to answer any questions that may arise from this presentation this evening.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, Rick, are we ready to go into the second half of our evening?
I think we are at this point. So Lori, uh, let's hear about your plans for streetscape improvement.
Alrighty, so I am going to share my screen.
Okay, I'll ask folks to, uh, turn off their cameras again.
Okay, can everybody see that? Okay?
Yes.
All right, fabulous. Um, so once again, my name is Lori Connors and I am the planning director for the town of North Row. And, uh, what I am interested in doing this evening is sharing with you my idea for an intermediate step um, on the way towards realization of, uh, the vision that was put forth in the Weston and Sampson plan. Um, so I am going to present my ideas to you. I am looking for some feedback from you um, as to this project idea. And also I'm interested in gauging the selectmen's interest in proceeding with the project, which would involve hiring, uh, engineering consultant to provide permitting and, uh, design services. So I wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of, uh, the phase one project scope. Um, so of course, the town of North Row really only has control over lands that it owns. Um, so we cannot mandate that private properties, property owners do anything with their properties. So this project really is a streetscape project. Um, so it involves, um, the Blake Street right of way. It involves the Little Pocket Park, um, that is at the intersection of Lake Street and Route twenty. There is a municipal parking lot to the north of that which would also be included. Um, there are two private parking lots. Uh, so this would be completely voluntary. Uh, whether the, uh, property owners wanted to participate in the project or not. Um, then there is a small portion of the Pier Street right of way, uh, where there exists a gap in the sidewalk network. Uh, that would be in, included within the phase one project. And there is, uh, the municipal parking lot on Pier Street, which is affiliated with the War Memorial Park um, at the Pier Street intersection. Now, the next, uh, few slides go into the existing conditions, uh, within the project area. Um, so this, of course, is a view of Blake Street, um, from the intersection with Route twenty. So this, uh, view is looking north. Um, and as you know, Blake Street is home to the municipally owned Four West Main Street, uh, which the town just, uh, reacquired, uh, within the last, uh, year. Uh, so that's located on the left. Um, and then there are a variety of commercial uses. There are apartments, uh, parking lots, and there is a little pocket park that you can see on the right. So one thing that I wanted to point out to you, um, is, uh, I, I think you can kind of see that in this picture. Uh, you can see that the paved width of the roadway really varies quite a bit. Um, so at its narrowest point at the intersection, so, uh, right where you see the, the sidewalk ending in this image, uh, Blake Street, the paved width of Blake Street is only twenty-two feet wide. Um, however, at its widest point, it's as much as fifty feet wide. And this is where on-street parking is accommodated in a perpendicular way, as you can see in this photo. So the travelway itself, um, also varies in width. Uh, so when you take the parking out of the equation, um, twenty-two fi- feet wide at its narrowest point. Um, in this location, the roadway is one-way and then, uh, it widens to twenty-eight feet at, um, and, uh, uh, further down the roadway and in that location, the road is two-way. So here are some pictures of the pocket park. Um, so this, this park holds, uh, the beloved Christmas tree. Um, this, of course, uh, many of you know, was planted in commemoration of a soldier who lost his life during the Vietnam War. It's also home to the Lions Club Electronic Message Center, which you can see here in the picture on the left. Um, there's a flagpole, there's a landscaped area and there is a seating wall. So, uh, no doubt in its heyday, uh, this pocket park was, uh, quite beautiful, but it's looking a little tired these days. Uh, this seating wall is starting to fall apart. The ground is dirt in some locations and I understand that the Christmas tree is in decline. Uh, the tree warden had provided me with that information. So I think the time is ripe for a makeover of this pocket park. Here are some images of the municipal parking lot next door. Uh, the pavement, as you can see, is cracking and heaved in a number of locations. Uh, the dumpster, um, which you see in the picture in the upper right is unsightly. Uh, of course, our, our planning board regulations require dumpsters to be screened, but we're not a good, uh, poster child for that because obviously there is no screening for this dumpster. Um, and then there are a number of, uh, donation boxes in the parking lot, which are pretty unsightly. So here are some pictures of, uh, two of the privately owned parking lots, uh, that are on the east side of Blake Street. So these parking lots are affiliated with the Fatouche Restaurants and, um, the doggy daycare and grooming facility. Uh, so some of these issue, the issues with these parking lots are, um, the, the driveway, uh, that you can see in the image, the right. Uh, accessing the parking lots is ridiculously large. It is as wide as a hundred and fifty feet, uh, which doesn't make a, a lot of sense because, uh, the Blake Street uh, access is only twenty-four feet um, at, at its intersection with, uh, Route twenty. So it doesn't make sense that you need to have a driveway opening that's a hundred and fifty feet. Some other issues is, uh, of course, the sea of pavement. Um, and you will see that the parking areas are unlined. Uh, so that means that people park in a haphazard way, some park parallel, some park um, perpendicular. And so it's not very efficient. There is also no drainage in this area. There's no drainage on Blake Street. There's no drainage in the municipal parking lot. And there's no drainage in these private parking lots either. Um, so that means that there is little means to, uh, accommodate the melting of snow as well as, um, you know, puddles that result from, uh, rainwater. So one thing that I also wanted to point out is the drive aisle. I did actually measure the distance, um, between the parking lot and, uh, the, there is a, a grass strip that separates this portion of the parking lot from Blake Street. And the drive aisle is forty-four feet wide. So the drive aisle in the municipal parking lot is the standard twenty-four feet wide. So it really is unnecessary to have, uh, such an excessive drive aisle width. Uh, so another issue I wanted to point out is along the, the very short extent of Blake Street, there are three different sidewalk and curving, uh, combinations. Uh, this certainly doesn't gel very well with, um, making an aesthetically pleasing streetscape. So alongside West Main Street, so this is, uh, the photo in the left, you see a concrete, uh, sidewalk. The, the sidewalk is six feet wide and, uh, it's has a six-inch-high vertical granite curb, um, that separates the sidewalk from, uh, the paved width of Blake Street. You move on a little bit from there and, uh, next you move on to an asphalt sidewalk, which is five feet wide. It does meander a little bit at this point. Um, because it's, uh, abutting the, the building. And this, uh, this sidewalk has either zero berm or a, um, a very slight berm. So the problem with this is that you don't have protection from, for the pedestrians when they are walking along the sidewalk. Uh, so this makes people feel unsafe. And another problem is, uh, cars can very easily park on the sidewalk itself, uh, which of course is an impediment to pedestrians. So then if you move on a little bit further from there, uh, this image on the right is the sidewalk in front of thirty-one Blake Street. Um, in this location, In this location, there is an asphalt sidewalk, it's also five feet wide, and it is separated by a grass strip and a berm. So this condition is not ideal. Consistency in the sidewalk types and physically separating the pedestrians from the traveled way is, is really preferred. So here are some images of Pier Street. So as you get to the end of Blake Street and you look left, you will find an asphalt sidewalk that is providing the connection to the current fire station and the municipal parking lot associated with that. But if you look to the right, you will see absolutely no sidewalk whatsoever. So there is no sidewalk on either side of the street. And this is unfortunate because within a, a short distance from there, you get to the War Memorial Park on Pier Street, and there is a municipal parking lot that is associated with that, which by my, my rough measurement could accommodate approximately 16 cars. Once again, this is an unlined parking lot, so people are not parking in, in a very efficient manner. So in summary, these are the problem areas that I have identified. The Pocket Park, once again, is in need of an upgrade. There are inconsistent road widths and sidewalk types along Blake Street. There's a lack of curbing along Blake Street. There's a lack, lack of sidewalk connection to the War Memorial Park and the municipal parking lot associated with that. And that is a disincentive for people who live along Pier Street and also Hudson Street to use Blake Street, to access Blake Street and walk into the downtown. There's a lack of crosswalks. Of course, where you don't have sidewalks, you are not obligated to provide crosswalks. But if we're going to be adding sidewalks, then it would be great to have more crosswalks. I mentioned the lack of drainage throughout the site. There's broken pavement, there's too much pavement. There's the inefficient parking lot layout, which is largely owing to the sea of pavement as well as the lack of striping, unsightly dumpsters and used clothing boxes, inadequate lighting, and there's also a lack of wayfinding signage. Even people who work for the town hall are largely unaware of the, of the location of the municipal parking lots. So that's unfortunate. We, we need to do better at identifying where municipal parking lots are. So what's the concept? So once again, this is an intermediary step. So this is making improvements to the public realm, for the most part only. So one of the suggestions that I would like to look at is consider making Blake Street one-way. The benefit along its entire length. So the benefit of that is that you can narrow the roadway, and that will enable you to accommodate more on-street parking and also wider sidewalks. I'd be interested in reducing the private parking lot driveway width. Chances are that's within the, the right of way. So that is something that would be within the town's control. Like to use granite curb and landscaping to do that. I'd like to add lot striping, parking lot striping to the current parking lots. I'd like to add clear pedestrian connections between parking lots, the roadway, as well as the buildings that are ADA compliant. They're attractive, they're well-lit, and they're safe. Like to extend the sidewalk to the War Memorial Park on Pier Street. I'd like to upgrade the asphalt sidewalks with ADA-compliant concrete sidewalks, granite curb, driveway aprons, crosswalks, and ramps. Upgrade the Pocket, Pocket Park with attractive seating, a bike rack, decorative pavers, landscaping, and art. I'd like to add street trees, pedestrian-scale LED lighting, and electric charging stations, the municipal parking lots. I'd like to install rain gardens, forest pavers, and bio-retention bumpouts, as well as vegetated bumpouts. And the reason for that is, as I mentioned, currently there is no stormwater mitigation. This would provide stormwater mitigation in an attractive way. And I'd like to install wayfinding signage. Oh, here are some images of what this could look like. So these are some pictures of other downtowns that have these features. As you can see, there are decorative, decorative LED lighting with the banner hardware built into the lights themselves. There are trash barrels, there are wide sidewalks, excuse me. There are vegetated bumpouts that accommodate street trees. And here's another image where there, you know, beautiful planters. And the bumpouts also provide opportunities for perennials and, and low, low-maintenance shrubs. Here are some images of ways that the Pocket Park could be improved. Excuse me. Right now, there is a paper walkway. But the, some of the bricks are kind of disheveled. Which means that they are not ADA compliant. There's also some grading issues in that park. So I would like to address that by creating ADA-accessible walkways. It is a nice element to have some forest pavers. It's in no gathering spaces. So in the image on the left, you have an example of a, another seating wall. It's probably a bit more comfortable to sit on than the one that currently exists in that Pocket Park. More opportunities to add, add street trees, but have them be ornamental trees. So, you know, flowering trees, and in this image, we have Japanese maples. And then in the image in the right, an alternative to doing the seating wall is to provide some attractive benches. And in this Pocket Park, certainly there's the opportunity to provide some picnic tables. It's a, it's a great location, and of course, you have the Fatouche Restaurants right on the other side of the municipal parking lot. So it would be nice to, to provide an opportunity for people to sit outside and eat during the warm weather months. So this image here talks about rain gardens. For those of you who aren't familiar, a, a rain garden is a slightly depressed landscape area that is designed to filter and infiltrate stormwater runoff. It includes low-level, low-maintenance plantings that won't impede site distance. Rain gardens and bioswales can be incorporated along roadways and in parking lots. And here are two images. You know, I'm going to let you know that I did a downtown revitalization project in the town of Milbury. And these pictures are actually from that project. So we had a similar ideals of wanting to green our downtown. And so we included low-impact stormwater measures as a means to do that. So on the left-hand side, you see a curbside rain garden. This is actually a bioswale. So it's a slightly different configuration. And in the lower image, this is a rain garden that abuts a parallel parking lot. So it's a, it's on-street parking that is angled and across from the Calabria Restaurant, if anybody wants to go and see what that looks like in real life. So parking lots are a fantastic opportunity to provide this low-impact type of drainage. They often also accommodate street trees, which provide welcome shade. They reduce the, the overall temperature of the parking lot, and they soften the look of it. So here are a couple images. This is actually not a picture in Milbury, but there is a rain garden system located within the municipal parking lot that certainly folks can view if they're interested. So this is kind of what the bioswale looks like in Milbury. So what are the benefits of doing a streetscape project of this scope? There are, there are a number of benefits, economic development benefits. So by improving the parking and making our, our public spaces more attractive and welcoming, we will hopefully attract private investment. So, you know, a lot of the slides that Jonathan Law showed included some major redevelopment to privately-owned properties. So that may follow if, if the development community sees that the town itself is willing to invest in the downtown. Might cause them to get excited and say, hey, you know, I want to be a part of the action. So, you know, here we go. I'm, I'm willing to go forward and invest a lot of my own money in making things look better. The other benefit is, of course, attracting businesses into some of our empty storefronts. There aren't so many on Blake Street, but there is Four West Main Street, which is super underutilized at this point. And there are a number of vacancies on Route 20 and, and other locations downtown. Public safety benefits. By making upgrades to the sidewalk, the lighting, and parking lot, we will encourage, hopefully, people to park once and walk between businesses, civic uses, homes, and open spaces. So this is something that came up time and time again during the public outreach campaign, that people were kind of frustrated by the lack of municipal parking or the perceived lack. So people would drive to CVS, they would park there, and then they'd be too afraid to leave their car there to visit other businesses in the area. So they would either get back in their car and drive their car to the other business that they would want to visit, or with, they would just say, forget it, and they would drive home. So it, it would be better for the health of the downtown if people felt that they could leave their car somewhere and walk between businesses. The aesthetic benefits, I think, are obvious. Climate change benefits. We already talked about how trees will reduce the heat island impacts. They will also absorb environmental pollutants. And then we talked about the electronic charging stations that would be installed in the municipal parking lots. And then by encouraging walking and cycling, so truly creating a complete street. So you're shifting the emphasis from the automobile to bicyclists and to pedestrians. We're going to reduce the greenhouse gases. And then, of course, there are a number of stormwater management benefits. It'd be nice not to have big puddles in our municipal parking lots and, and elsewhere. So this isn't going to be cheap. So my experience with my other downtown revitalization projects were that the design costs are going to be in the neighborhood of $250,000. Of course, if the private property owners agree to participate, it would be a more expensive project. If they are not interested in participating, then the, the scope of the design will be less than this. I do anticipate that the construction cost will be in the neighborhood of 2.5 million. So it's a, it's a pretty pricey endeavor, but a worthwhile one, in my opinion. So there are a variety of funding sources that we could possibly tap into for both the design and the construction. As far as design is concerned, the fastest way of going forward with the project is either municipal appropriation at the April Town Meeting or using ARPA funds. There is a limited ability to use Community Preservation Act funds that pretty much could only be used for the Little Pocket Park. But still, you know, it's worth mentioning. And then there's also the ability to tap into Chapter 90 and for the town to provide in-kind services to reduce costs. And then there are also a number of grants for downtown revitalization activities. We are a Complete Streets community, and this is a Complete Streets project. So I am interested in allocating the full $500,000 that would be available through the Complete Streets Construction Grant Program to this project. There is also the possibility of applying for grants to the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. Particularly, as I mentioned, currently we have no drainage at all and a sea of asphalt. By making that change, that could be a project that is appealing to that grant program. And then the Commonwealth Places Grant. So that is also an opportunity to fund the improvements to the Pocket Park. I would like to expand that Pocket Park slightly so that we can accommodate some of the activities that Jonathan had mentioned in his presentation, while still providing sufficient parking for, for West Main Street. So what are the next steps? In a perfect world, the project schedule would look like this. In the winter, spring of 2024, we would secure municipal funding for the project design. So like I said, I expect that price tag to be about $250,000. Once we have that money secured, we will be able to go out to bid to locate an engineering consultant. And then I would like to form a focus group that will oversee the design team, the consultant that is hired, to ensure that the work is in line with what makes sense, makes sense for the town of Northborough and the goals and objectives of the residents. So in summer 2024 to summer 2025, I expect a year-long design and permitting process. As part of that process, there would be a public outreach campaign. So I anticipate a couple of different community workshops at various intervals in the design process, most likely at the 25% design phase and then at the 50% design phase, just to make sure that we're on track with the design and doing what people want. Then during that period of time, we would also be preparing and submitting grant applications to pay for the construction of the project. And there is an obligation for municipal match. So there's no way I'd be able to get grant money to fund 100% of the construction costs. It would be expected that this town would pony up a significant share. So in the winter of 2025, 2026, that's when I expect that we would go out to bid to procure a construction contractor. And of course, that's based on funding. And then the construction timeline would take approximately nine months. So ideally, it would start in April of 2026, weather-dependent, and it would wrap up in early December of 2026. And that's pretty much it, that's what I have at this point. So thank you for listening, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have at this point.
Great, so we'll do the same format for, for questions of electronic hands. Before we begin, I want to make sure everybody knows that the Select Board is not considering any vote on funding for this tonight. Uh, for this tonight, however, this item is on our agenda for this coming Monday night. Where Lori has requested that the board consider ARPA funding for the design phase of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So she'll be attending that meeting, but I encourage select board members to ask uh any questions they can think of now. And we'll just have another opportunity to do that again on Monday. Um, with that, I will open it up to uh to anyone who would like to ask a question, either a. Member of these meetings or otherwise. And the first one I see is our town administrator, Tim.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me on. You can hear me okay, Mitch?
We do.
So yeah, it's, it's funny that there's two, two themes here. I ju- I sent out a sh- short thirty day synopsis to the board. And one of my recommendations was this Economic Development Coordinator. To help us retrain, retain and attract businesses throughout Northborough, with the downtown being the focus. Uh, so that's one thing. The other piece is, you know, I'm asking the finance team in-house and town hall to look at. The value of the area of downtown and what improvements have been made based on permits. And what public improvements have occurred in the past ten years. I'm trying to build a model financially to, to kind of prove to myself and prove to the community that investment by the community. Yields tax dollars. So the growth in retaining businesses from a real estate standpoint and property taxes. And personal property. So I'm trying to model that. So we're working on that particular piece. And then one of the questions the board asked me during the interview process was about economic development and how would we go about it? And I remember Julianne, I think, asked me, one of my written surveys was about creating a pilot. Where you would have a pilot program for a development area. And Laurie has done a great job explaining what I couldn't explain to the board of what my pilot might look like. So this is what that answer is from my interview three months ago. This is the model that you could take and then replicate. I'm sure people want to do more, but you simply just don't have funds to do everything you want. But this could be a model that we could use as a catalyst to move, you know. On an eastern west, western front and replicate it throughout. If we like the design, we like the implementation, we like the cost, nothing is going to happen overnight, nothing ever does unfortunately. Uh, in a municipal environment, we have to design things at ADA compliant and all that stuff costs money and takes time. But I, I, you know, Laurie, I think you did a, a great job presenting and telling us. You know, extracting one facet of this major plan that Weston Sampson did. And and taking it and showing us what we can do next as a, as a pilot, as a plan for replicating. What economic development could and should look like. And that area is a good target. Because there's a lot of people don't even know that there's municipal parking and or businesses throughout that whole plaza. If you're here and you work here and you live it every day, you might know it. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that the, out of the fifteen thousand people that live here, it's not uh, not known. It's probably avoided because of the traffic. If we make it attractive, we can have, uh, we can start to revitalize the downtown. As a piece, the common on the other side, uh diagonal across is an unbelievable testament to the, to the work you've already done. I think this is just another step along that road. So that's what I wanted to share with you tonight.
Peace, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. Um, Rick, I saw your electronic hand came up. You as co-chair of this can yell at any time.
Okay, um. Yeah, I guess I'd just like to amplify a little bit what Laurie said. In my view, especially because we're not going to have. In the foreseeable future, any way to really deal with the issue of Route twenty. We have to look at areas abutting and adjacent to Route twenty that can sort of take us away from that. And Blake Street um has the potential to be an area that could implement a lot of things people are looking for. Without having to worry about the actual Route twenty impact. Once you get on Blake Street, you could get into a little sort of carved out area. Um, that could provide the kinds of pedestrian access, businesses, beautification that I think people want to see. And with Four West Main Street at one end and the fire station at the other end. Both town-owned properties, we really have the ability to concentrate our efforts. Over the next few years and sort of turning that into the beginning of what um a pedestrian-friendly. Parking-friendly, um, business-friendly environment could be. And if we can start out by getting the planning done for the actual roadway itself. And then follow on with how to redo Four West Main and eventually how to redo the fire station. We would have the beginnings of a downtown environment that I think would like, I think people would like. And so I think what Laurie is proposing starts to set the stage. And I agree with her. If people start to see the town is doing this, it's going to attract interest. And it's also going to show to our citizens, right, that we're serious, that we basically took a major concern that came up in our master plan. And we're doing something about it. So this, this is beneficial from a whole lot of standpoints. But from my perspective, it starts to build a pathway between Four West Main and the fire station. Which I think becomes an important uh thing that we have control over and can develop over time. And then if we can get our Economic Development Coordinator who can start to work with the business owners on Blake Street. And start to see what other opportunities there, we can roll out, you know, even more revitalization. So I think it's a well-spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get the plan for this done. So that's my two cents.
Thanks, Rick. Um, let's see, Julianne, I think you had your hand up first.
Thank you. Um, thank you so much, Laurie. This is really kind of exciting. Um, so I have four questions and they may be getting into the weeds too much. So just tell me if this is some, you know, some issues that we'll just have to tackle along the way. But the first is, and it was an observation brought up by Jean Cahill, is that um. As quickly as possible, we have to figure out what, what Four West Main Street is going to be used for. I know Town Hall Feasibility Committee is looking at, at that as a possibility. So whatever, whatever MPIC can do or Board of Selectmen can do to accelerate their decision. I think will be very important. The second question I have is, as long as we're tearing the street up. Are, did you, did you mention or could we consider putting the utilities underground?
Hmm, sure. I mean, we could. Uh, if that's something that is a, a major priority. Then the time to put the utilities underground is certainly part of this project. Um, I am going to warn you that it is super, super pricey. So if that is the goal, then chances are two hundred and fifty thousand won't be sufficient uh to do the design. Um, and it turns, uh unlikely that two point five million will be sufficient to do the construction. It may be about a million dollars more than that, uh just to do that small stretch of roadway. Um, so that is not something that I included within the scope of work. But if that's something that people really want to go forward with and they're willing to, to bite the bullet and pay for it. There are no grants for be- burying utilities, so it would be one hundred percent on the shoulders of the town to pay for that.
Hmm. Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's worth a discussion and, and. Seeing, you know, getting some definite numbers on extra cost. Uh, because, because as you will, as people always point out, that's the time to do it. And, you know, the, the grand future plan is to put the downtown pole, um, utilities underground. When and if we redo Route twenty. So, um, okay, so my. My third question is, will the engineer do a pretty comprehensive study on? You know, when we discussed this, you brought this up briefly at an MPIC meeting, um, the one-way versus two-way. There's a lot of concern and those of us who have been in town for a while. Um, know how tricky that, that road can be. So if we could, we, if we could get information on. It, you know, the, the, the benefits and how that would all work easily. Um, I think that'd be a great part of the plan. And my last question is, um, if over the parking. Can we put those solar arrays? You know how they do the covered?
A solar carport?
Yeah, and that would add another million probably.
Um, actually, there are grants available for solar carports. Um, one of the negatives of doing a solar carport is you can't do trees. So obviously, those um, those interfere. Uh, so a decision will have to be made as to whether you want an aesthetically pleasing parking lot. Or whether you want, um, you know, a, a real. Uh, eco, eco-friendly parking lot by doing the climate change mitigation. So I'm fine with both. I have been involved with a solar carport project. It was a great project. I know that there are a number of um municipal buildings that include solar carports. Uh, there's, there's a project, uh, the police station in Sutton is a good example of one. And of course, the employees love it because they get a garage pretty much. So the, the carport keeps the snow and the rain off of their vehicles. Uh, while they're parking there. So it, it has benefits to the drivers as well. So if that's something that you folks want, then uh certainly we can incorporate that. Um, but keep in mind, that means uh no greening.
Yeah, oh yeah, I don't know about that then. Okay, um, anyway, thank you again. It was really terrific.
Thank you, Julianne.
Uh, thanks, Julianne. Uh, Tim, I see your hand up. Did you have something as follow-up to um to that topic?
Yeah, it's just two things. The, the connection, uh, we don't, we don't want to get into the weeds, I guess, but I'll just. We can, we can prepare the groundwork for underground utilities, put the conduit on the ground at a lower co- cost for a future connection. If you look at those buildings now, the wires come in from the top of the pole to the top of the building and run down the side to a meter. If the private, you know, the, the municipal building's there, then the private buildings that are behind it. Those are all the same way. They're all fed from the top. That private cost to reconnect those meters from the ground up. That's, that's where it gets really expensive. So I just caution us relative to private property. And reconnecting those folks to utilities, that's, that's where the cost is going to be really, really high. And to coordinate that effort is a difficult thing to do. So I just wanted to just.
Great. Thanks, Tim. Um, I see a message. Uh, was that, you're, you're done, Tim? All set. Okay, thanks. Um, I'll go to one question from the audience and we'll come back to committee member questions. I see Mike Tejin uh with a question. Mike, if you could identify yourself and ask a question, unmute yourself, please.
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
You're fine, Mike.
Great. Yeah, hi, this is Mike Tejin, uh Thirty Auger Avenue. Um, yeah, again, thank you, Laurie, um, for putting this together and, and uh, and for a great presentation. I think a lot of what you um laid out just for that Blake Street area um would be uh certainly an improvement. Um, but one question I have is, is regarding to the parking. So even with uh improvements to downtown, um, and a lot of parts of Northborough, in order to enjoy them, you're going to have to drive downtown. Um, so for the amount of parking, um, do you know approximately how many spots there are now? And then with all the implemented changes, are you uh net or, or negative parking spots?
I know exactly the number of parking spaces. Uh, so there are, um. Let's see, there's uh forty-four parking spaces between the municipal parking lot. And the on-street parking that's across from Four West Main Street. Um, if you go on the other end of uh, of Blake Street. There is another eleven parking spaces. Um, I question whether those spaces are on private property or on public property. Uh, that's when a survey of Blake Street is really essential to be able to identify the ownership of those parking spaces. Um, but just between those two parking lots, uh, you end up with uh fifty-five parking spaces. Then there's the sixteen parking spaces approximately, like I said, un- online parking lot. Um, the municipal parking lot on Pier Street. And then the parking spaces that are associated with the private lots. Um, those are unlined and difficult to quantify, so I can't really tell you. Because the, there, like I said, there's like a mass of pavement all around those buildings. Uh, so those are diff- more difficult to quantify. And there are also six parking spaces behind Four West Main Street. Um, so you can add that to the, to the number as well. So right over by Four West Main Street, you're talking about uh fifty parking spaces.
Okay, okay. And any um idea then with the changes that you, because right, you'd be adding more sidewalk space, more walkable space? Any idea roughly maybe how many that would be reduced by or how many?
So by closing in that absolutely gigantic opening uh for the parking lot. Um, to the Fatouche Restaurant, uh, you could do an additional six. Um, parallel parking spaces. If the town agreed to go to a one-way road configuration instead of the two-way. Um, then there would be the potential to do even more parking spaces, maybe in a diagonal configuration. Um, but uh I would guess that you would at least get those five. At, at a minimum, the five parking spaces in a parallel configuration.
Okay, and then just one other short follow-up or additional question. You know, all this, um, you know, uh, changes and, and beautification that would go on, we still have those train tracks right there. Um, is there anything we're able to do or any consideration, and you probably already thought of this. But what could be done with either like shrubbery or trees or nice fencing or something to kind of block that off? Or, or try and break up the, the sightline to the, to the train when it rolls through?
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely things that can be done uh with the, the pocket park. And then the municipal parking lot, um, which is a large extent along the railroad tracks. So, um, you know, there could be fencing, there could be landscaping. Uh, it would be rather pricey to, to fence and landscape the entire extent. But as you mentioned, there may be opportunities to kind of break it up a little bit here and there. And, um, you know, soften, soften the noise when it, it goes through, the trains go through that area. Um, with shrubbery.
Great. Thank you, Laurie.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, let's see, Christian Wixton.
Hi, um, thanks. Um, great presentation, Laurie. I appreciate that. Um, you mentioned you checked with the tree warden about the Christmas tree. And I realize I don't know who the tree warden is, so this isn't a super um urgent question, but who is the tree warden?
Scott Charvendier.
Oh, okay, okay.
And he actually volunteered the information. I had sent him my presentation and he said, uh, just so you know. Um, that, that tree is in decline. So, um, I had originally spoken, uh, when I kind of launched this idea between the M. Uh, before the MPIC at the last meeting. I had mentioned my desire to retain the existing trees. And kind of build the park improvements around the existing trees. And he wanted me to be aware that uh maybe we shouldn't be planting around that particular tree. Yeah, there's certainly an opportunity to, to, you know, if that one has, um, is beyond. Beyond recovery, then there's an opportunity to plant a new one. Or maybe move the Christmas tree to the town common.
Yeah.
That's a desire.
Right. Okay, and then, um, I loved how Tim said, um, investment in the community is a. It's going to increase economic development. That's really the spirit of, um. One of the things that I feel like we talked about on various occasions in the last few years. Um, so I, I love how everybody is kind of coming to that same conclusion all at the same time. Um, and I would be more in the um neighborhood of um trees than. Um, and I would be more in the, um, neighborhood of, um, trees than solar panels if you obviously shouldn't have both. Um, because I think it, as far as like, well, trees are also obviously very environmentally friendly, so that seems to make sense to me. And also they're just more beautiful. Maybe we could do one of those cool parking lots Julian was talking about in another spot where not as many people are hanging out and eating pizza. Okay, thanks.
Great. Thanks, Kristen. Just as a, a minor follow-up to the tree question, I, I read some history of the, uh, the Neil Ellsworth Memorial Christmas tree not too long ago. And I believe that's actually the third tree at that location for that purpose. Um, the original was planted, you know, in the early seventies. And, uh, as trees go, it's had to be replaced once or twice. So this wouldn't be the first time. Uh, Lisa, Misselli.
Thank you. Um, and again, I that, um, I think that this Lori's presentation is wonderful and I like the fact that we're starting with Blake. I think Blake is, um, it's a quiet street actually for, for being downtown. You go down there to get a few things and it's very quiet. Um, and I think that with a little bit of, uh, working together, that it can certainly be enhanced and make it the beginning. But just like when they started with the town common, start, start small and, and grow it. And I think that'll be lovely. Um, I do think, you know, the railroad tracks do play an important role. We could, we could probably do some sort of vegetation or whatever, a little bit higher up perhaps, you know, with a granite curb there and, uh, and maybe on that side, you could put some of those, um, solar coverings, because there would not be trees on that side. Uh, trees are probably on the other side in between Blake and, um, the, um, the people that are parking there now. Cause you get some islands there already and you'd be adding some islands. So you might be able to do both. Um, maybe put your, um, your electric, um, tank under one of those. So not only do they get to pump their electricity into their car, they, we have a little less bird poop on their car. It's a, it's interesting when you look at what you can do down there. A couple of questions I have, uh, only in the sidewalk areas. When you're going to the Pierce Street, uh, Annex Parking, that's at the War Memorial, what do you do with the sidewalk when it goes over the railroad tracks? I mean, you have to, obviously the tracks can't be covered. Is it just like you just take your chances and walk over them to go over to the, to the other side? What do they do? Do you know?
Well, I've seen, uh, several instances where they do have, uh, you know, sidewalks that go over the, the railroad tracks. Um, but I, I would certainly open up the conversation with the railroad, uh, to see what the limitations are, what they would allow. Uh, but even if they don't allow a sidewalk over the tracks themselves, we can certainly do a sidewalk abutting the railroad tracks, you know, on both ends. Uh, right now, there's just this huge gap where there's, there's no sidewalk at all. Uh, whi- which is unfortunate because it's not easy walking either. Kind of, kind of, the surfacing is kind of a mess in between there.
It is dangerous. But, um, I, again, I, I like the idea. Um, I think that we could, you know, reach out to the people who do have the businesses there and maybe see if they're going to be interested in helping to enhance their properties. Cause um, the two end corners of, um, the Doggy Den and Fatouche's. And that'd be beautiful if Fatouche could create, uh, an outside eating space like they did at, uh, The Cellar. That is a beautiful place to go to, to sit outside and eat. And, uh, maybe they could take that model and create that on that little bit of, uh, pavement that is right next to the building. But, um, I think we, we have to look at all, all the options that we can do down there and get people in- involved and started to, to care about, you know, kind of dressing up the place and, um, you know, to the parking area and questions, I think, I think even if we, um, while we're waiting to do some of this all, I think a couple of signs put up would be helpful. Saying public parking this way with an arrow. Uh, I think that we could probably paint, you know, Tim, you might be able to answer that. You know, we paint some lines up now that are missing to go into areas that would help people to realize that it is a public parking place and these are the spots. Um, and taking away the, the, um, the boxes that you talked about. I think that could be done with no, no thoughts. You just call the companies that own them and they could take that away. And certainly even plantings could be put in, in front of the, uh, the town hall. What? The new town hall I hope we moved into. Um, so there's an awful lot that can be done down there and I really appreciate the, the time and energy that you've put into it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Um, I don't see any other hands up right now. I've got a couple of questions myself. Um, eh, the one-way aspect of Blake Street, um, do I, you understand right? That's, that would be going from, uh, West Main to Pierce, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So that poses a couple of challenges. Right now, you can only um, get onto that aspect if you are going towards Shrewsbury from Marlboro. That that's set up that you can, you can't cross. Sometimes I've seen people do it, but you're not supposed to. So I don't know if we'd have some safe way of opening that up. That's a, that's a challenge, of course, going off, going across both lanes of traffic on Route 20. For people who live in town that need to come downtown from Church Street, that poses a question is how do they get into that area right now? Um, and I'm one of those people. Um, I come in from Church Street to Pierce Street and then take a right on Blake and then I can go and visit those businesses. Um, I think generally making it one way makes a lot of sense, but we'd have to think about how to address those flow challenges to make sure that we're not then making it really hard for people to, to get into that area. Just think about how to do that. My expectation is that would, that would come up during the design process.
Yeah. So what I'm interested in doing is, is hiring a, um, multi-discipline engineering firm. Um, so some of the, uh, professional expertise that we're going to need as part of this, uh, effort is a surveyor, we're going to need a civil engineer, a traffic engineer to study that one-way configuration, a landscape architect, we may need a soil specialist. Um, so you know, uh, chances are we'll go with a larger firm, uh, that has all of these various disciplines in house.
Great. Thanks, Lori. Um, another question. One of the, uh, the big downtown events every year on Blake Street is the Applefest Rotary Street Fair. And, um, it, looking at this plan, it looks like, you know, you would be able to continue to do it, do that. And it might even be a little bit nicer. But again, I want to make sure that that's thought about in that process.
Yeah. So during the, during the time of construction, um, you know, obviously things are disrupted and it's not, it may be uh, may be necessary during the construction timeframe to move that event elsewhere. Um, however, the, the Weston and Sampson Plan called for a much larger open space, uh, on the municipal parking lot. Um, I'm not envisioning that we do that at this point because we haven't found a solution to our parking problem. Uh, so that's why I'm saying that this is an intermediary step. Um, so we would preserve, uh, the, at, at least the current parking spaces that we have. Um, hopefully we can expand that open space area a little bit. Um, so we can offset the parking spaces we'll lose to the municipal parking lot in, uh, the parallel parking that we will add by closing up that, um, that driveway entrance. Um, so I, I think that there are things that we can do, but absolutely uh, the goal is, uh, to have more people coming to downtown. So we don't want to stop people from gathering where they are currently gathering.
Great. Thank you, Lori. I see Fran, you've put your hand up.
I did. Um, oh, because I just want to be sure and, uh, Lori, after watching this presentation for the second time, I think it, I feel more excited about the opportunity because it's just going to look nicer and be more, um, user-friendly, which will encourage people into the area. Uh, but my, my concern is it's a cost two and a half million dollar estimate on the project. And we keep saying intermediary. We're not talking about like undoing it in five years because there was something bigger that we wanted, right?
No, I mean, uh, one of the recommendations in the report is to do a structured parking garage. But that's a huge dollar figure and I'm not clear whether the town has the appetite to absorb that dollar figure. Um, so unless the parking garage is built, there will always need a, a, uh, be a need for parking in this location. So I, um, I am thinking that uh, it will absolutely be in place until it's time it's degraded to such a point where you have to do something different.
Yeah. And, uh, I guess just the follow-up while, um, a select member, uh, Misselli would be thrilled to be at Four West Main Street. There goes all of our, um, community parking if the staff is going to be over there, right?
No.
I assume that the, uh, Town Office's feasibility study committee is taking various options into consideration for, uh, for town offices and thinking about Four West Main and everything else.
We haven't, we haven't got that detailed yet, talking about parking, but, um, we will.
I think if I remember right, the, um, the potential future parking garage uh, for that area, that would obviously have to replace some existing buildings. I think the, the Sawyer's Bowling Alley and the Consignment Shop building, which is, at least they're both mixed-use buildings. I think that, that way, I think that was the location, if not one further back in another, uh, multifamily area.
If I remember correctly, and Jonathan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe that the parking garage was supposed to be on Pierce Street on the municipal parking lot that is, uh, across the street from the current fire station.
Okay.
That's correct. That's correct. Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, that, that certainly would have been another impediment to that garage if, if it was having to replace existing privately owned buildings. Um, while I appreciate, you know, some of those owners may want to do some upgrades as part of this also. But I don't want to, I don't want to drive them out. Are there any other questions from either committee members or staff present or, uh, attendees in the virtual audience? Okay, I don't see anything else. Again, this item will be continued again, uh, at the select board meeting this coming Monday night. So, um, we'll have the opportunity to dig into this a little bit more before the board makes any decisions about design funding. Um, so I'd encourage certainly select board members to think about this a little bit more over the weekend while we prepare for that meeting. There being nothing else. Um, I know Rick, you have to, I don't know if you have, uh, any other business tonight um, other than talking about your next meeting?
Uh, no, um, I'd just like to make a couple of sort of concluding comments about this. Um, I'm very pleased by the way this evening went. I think John and Ross, you did a nice job presenting the plan. I sense a lot of positive energy of all of us involved about wanting to go forward and start to make things happen, which I think is, is a very positive outcome. Um, once again, I want to thank everybody on the Master Plan Implementation Committee for bringing this uh, forward as far as it's gone to this point and Lori to you, particularly for all the work you've done and staff support being the go-between, between the committee, uh, uh, the town and the consultants kind of thing. Um, I think Mitch, you and I need to talk a little bit down the road here about the ongoing role of the MPIC in downtown revitalization. I think our main goal was to take this aspect out of the plan, flesh it out and give the town something to work with. And we've done that. I know the committee still has a desire to stay involved, but I don't see the MPIC becoming managing downtown revitalization. I mean, there are other things in the plan that we ought to look at and bring forward also. By the same token, we've been so involved. I'm sure there's a role we can play going forward between our committee, Lori and you, and hopefully an economic development person will be brought on board at some point. From a timing standpoint, my view of the world is calendar year twenty-four would be a good year to get started on the Blake Street proposal that Lori proposed. It would also be a good year to do the planning that needs to be done to decide how Four, Four West Main Street and the fire station could be used someday to take a look at the zoning and understand, uh, what needs to happen there in our design guidelines and what we need to do to define what classic New England actually means and get that in a way that we can express it to people that are interested in developing in town. So I see all of those things as calendar year twenty-four items and obviously trying to figure out how to fund um, the plan for Blake Street in calendar year twenty-four to get that going. And then to bring the town meeting in twenty-five, any zoning changes, design review changes, additional funding that's needed to move this thing forward longer term going down the road. So I see the short-term thing we want to spend on in twenty-four is getting Blake Street Improvement going and using the rest of twenty-four to plan out our strategy for where we go next and be prepared if there are articles that have to go before the town to keep this thing going, to be prepared to present those, you know, with town meeting next year. So that's kind of my view of how I see this thing playing out. Obviously, as the select board meets, you guys can work your way through that, you know, also. But I think the only short-term expense that needs to be considered is funding the design for, uh, the Blake Street Improvement Project. Um, I guess that kind of from my aspect wraps it up. Um, Lori, I think our next meeting will be held, uh, third Thursday in February, if I'm correct, right?
That's correct.
Right. So we can put an agenda together for that. I'm not sure if there's anything administratively else we need to do to officially end the meeting, Mitch.
Other than, um, a motion to adjourn and a vote from each of our two committees.
All right. I guess I'll start with the MPIC. Can I hear a motion to adjourn the MPIC meeting tonight?
So moved, the chair. Adjourn.
Second.
Second. I don't know. I guess to be actively official here. We've done this at the other meetings here. If I can find my cheat sheet here. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn the, uh, January eighteenth MPIC meeting. Need to take a vote on that, Julianne?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Um, Fran?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Quickly votes aye. John Campbell?
Aye.
I'm not sure if Janet eventually joined the meeting or not. I don't see her up there. So I guess it has been unanimously approved to adjourn the meetings. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from the select board.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen to adjourn. Um, all those in favor, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. The select board is adjourned nine thirteen PM and that concludes this evening's discussion. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you all.
It was wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.